We'd like to call today's commission meeting to order. And we would have, first of all, thanks for our special guests who attended this afternoon from Boil County High School. And we're going to have Mr. Brendan Casey, he was a 10th grader at Boil County High School, celebrating his 16th birthday at City Hall today. He's going to lead us in the... So we're going to have prayer by Commissioner Terry, and it'll be followed by Brendan, who's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Happy birthday Brendan.
Please join me in prayer. God Almighty, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you help us to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and guide us to be the leaders your people need. Please help us to listen with humility and open minds and spirits. Renew our spirits to appreciate the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person in your goodness and love. Amen.
And Brendan is going to be joined by his classmate Emily Pack, as they both lead the class.
Brendan also has a twin brother.
I'm telling you, what a way to spend your 16th birthday.
Well, in our conversation, he never admitted to having a twin. But I'm not going to ask which one's the older brother, but we shall move on. The next item on our agenda is to entertain a motion to approve our agenda. Can you entertain a motion to approve the agenda that's presented today?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners Sir and Commissioner Hallo. Any questions or comments? If not, share with entertain a motion to approve as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. They're from Mrs. Forrest Biology Class at Boil County High School, and they're here to observe how city government impacts our environment. Did I get that right? Alright, well, good luck tonight. Next on our agenda is the hear the public, and the public is asked to come to the microphone to speak on any item that is listed on our agenda at this time. Only on agenda items, and I would like to ask if you do come to the mic, since we have some business here, to identify yourself as well. So, anyone wanting to speak on any agenda item? Or hearing none, then we'll move to the next item then. The next item is the approval of the minutes of our previous meetings, February 27, 2017.
I'm moved to approve the minutes from February 27, 2017, as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Sorry Donna. And Commissioner comments, let's see, the ASAP meeting, is that every month at 8:00 AM or PM?
8:00 AM.
So, we'll just make that correction then. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, additions or deletions? If none, I'd like to move to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes then approved. Next on our agenda is a proclamation, welcoming Mid and East Antrim Borough Mayor Audrey Wells to our community. Madam Clerk, would you read that proclamation forth please?
Resolved on behalf of the citizens of Danville, Kentucky, the City of Danville, Board of Commissioners welcomes to Danville, Kentucky, Mid and East Antrim Borough Mayor Audrey Wells and her consort Chris Wells. Whereas since the sister cities' international relationship was first established on May 28, 2008, several large groups of Danvillians have been warmly welcomed into Carrick Fergus and been greatly enriched by their experiences there. Citizen diplomacy between our two towns has been furthered by exchanges of musicians, artists, cultural ambassadors. And whereas the City of Danville is very pleased to welcome the First Lady Mayor of the Mid and East Antrim Borough Council Mayor Wells and further promote our sister cities' relationship. And whereas the City of Danville and our sister cities' commission will be hosting Mayor Audrey Wells at the Rotary International Dinner on Saturday, March 18. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville urge all residents of Danville to join with us during this time to recognize and welcome Mayor Audrey Wells and her consort Chris Wells during their stay in Danville, Kentucky, this 13th day of March 2017.
Thank you ma'am. Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamation carries. Is anyone present from the sister cities' commission? Is the Mayor Wells and her present, consort present? Anybody want to discuss and give us an overview of the agenda, the scheduled agenda for those visitors? Okay?
I think the agenda is still being developed, and according to the chairman and I talked this afternoon, there are a number of activities that are being scheduled, but we don't have that in front of us.
Okay. Thank you ma'am. Next on the agenda is our Danville Housing Authority, recognition of our directors pending retirement, and introduction of the incoming director. So, Ms. Rachel White and Mr. Tim Kites, you want to come forward?
Commissioners, I'm coming before you to say goodbye and to say hello to Tim Kite, who is now Acting Director. I am now in a consulting position, so I get to hide back in a room and he gets to handle all the day-to-day things that are going on, and he's doing a great job. And I just want to thank the commission for being... Do I only have three minutes to talk? So, I just want to thank the commissioner, the commission for being so supportive over the past 30 years of course...
There's the three. How many years?
Thirty.
Alright, get that out there, okay.
And to hope that Tim is able to have the same relationship, but I can't imagine why not. Tim?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to meeting with each of you and just continuing that great relationship that Rachel has built over many years. Thank you.
Well, let's give Rachel a...
I'd like to recognize Ann Young, who is my Vice Chair, and Linda Hudman, the Deputy Director, and my husband, Paul White, who has also been very supportive over these 30 years.
Alright. May you like to say something?
I would, I appreciate it. Thank you. Dear Commissioners, the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority of Danville would like to thank Rachel White for her 30 years of dedicated service to the Danville and Boil County Community through the Housing Authority. Under her leadership, the Authority has received high performer status many, many times, was selected the State Public Housing Authority in 1999, and was the winner of the Large Public Housing Authority of the Year just a year ago in 2016 for the State of Kentucky. For her loyalty and dedication and her many years of working out of a second-floor resident apartment for many years, the board would like to rename our new office building on Rosemont Avenue in honor of Rachel, so this will soon be the Rachel R. White Housing Authority Building of Danville. And the sign is a work in progress. So, thank you.
You have the White House.
There we go. So, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. White, I don't care what anyone says, 30 years in the same job in this community is amazing. So I congratulate you, and I think it's very befitting that the commission and that the Board has agreed to name that facility in your honor, so we are greatly pleased with that. Any other Commissioners want to respond to Rachel's retirement, pending retirement?
I'd just like to thank her for her hard work. I know if you've been here as long as I have, or longer, you sort of remember where the Housing Authority was compared to where it is, and it's just amazing, the job you've done, and we are all very appreciative.
I've gotten to know Rachel and Paul on a personal level as well, for the last four years. And there are very few people in this city and county who have worked harder than Rachel has. She's constantly on the move, she gets things done, and we appreciate that Rachel.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is to have some Housing Authority reappointments, so Tim, would you come back up and make those nominations forth please? Put you to work since you just got introduced.
Upon recommendation of the Housing Authority, I would like to recommend that Tom Hanloser and Paul Lewis be reappointed to the Housing Authority Board.
I move for approval of that recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Probably move in second that we accept those recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, both have been reappointed.
Thank you.
Keep some continuity there, Tim. That'd be good, huh?
And next on our agenda, second reading of ordinance 1891, a zone change involving War Admiral. Share like to entertain a motion with purpose of discussion?
Move for approval of second reading of ordinance 1891.
Okay, probably move in second. Any questions, any discussion? Donna needs to read that, I know, before we move, but Stephen might want to read it.
Second reading of ordinance 1891, an ordinance changing the zone from NCC Neighborhood Conservation Classification to HC Highway Commercial for 2.347 acres of real property located at 109 War Admiral Road in Danville, Kentucky.
Questions, discussion?
It's been well discussed, I think.
Okay. Well, we need to have a roll call vote, so roll call vote please.
Your pro Tim Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Thank you. Code Enforcement Monthly Report is next on our agenda. Miss Lister?
You have a thick report in front of you, trying to figure out what all the information to give you. Some of the highlights were that we had 23 garbage and trash nuisance complaints, we had 26 special event permits, which are the, is under the new ordinance that you all passed around the time of the brass band festival, so this is second or third time that we've issued those. We had 24 garbage container complaints, we issued 26 business licenses, we recovered six liens in the amount of $2,008.34. And we had a total for the month of inspections, activities, and complaints of 188. I'll entertain any questions you might have, and also note that items 1 through 3 on the front of your report, which would be 113 Beach Street, 116 Beach Street, and 1207 Sycamore, property owner decided to go ahead and demolish those once we notified him about violations. So, those have been demolished and cleaned up.
Having the additional person made a difference in the...
It has helped tremendously. It does, it makes a big difference. We can tell that already, it's been almost five months, so we expect that to help.
Also wondering the class that's here, I think this might be the only thing we're doing tonight that could possibly qualify as relating to...
Yeah.
...environments, I don't know how much of this we can give them or let them see or whatever, but...
All open records, and in fact, the color copies, I mean, the copies of the properties and violations you have are on our website, so you can go to our website and pull those up individually by address.
Yeah, I was going to head mine out to one of them, so they could browse through and take it back and share with their professor.
And I included with that an updated copy of the condemned properties list and our current liens list as well in the report, so you can see where we are with those.
No, I'd like to say, I'm pretty impressed with this report, and I think that where we're going now in the city with you coming to report to us this often, it seems to me like it's producing some good results, and I was very impressed with this report. So, for my own ignorance, I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions, because I thought it was kind of interesting looking through here. On this condemned property, City of Danville, you've got a couple Main Street places, anything happening with those?
Different things are happening. How much do you want to get in on the one, Stephen?
There is one subject of litigation I'd prefer we not talk about publicly.
Sure, that's fine.
But the other one can be open for discussion.
Yes, there's, we've had class from UK looking at that building and studying that building and working with the property owner. There's some potential purchase out there, that's all I can say at this point about that. So, there's things potentially happening, but as of right now, there's not anything more going on.
That's fine. That made sense, there were some legal issues, I was just kind of curious, I'm trying to get used to this report, which I again, think is very good. So, just another one, you know, you have like a whole bunch of the same person's name and different dates and where they paid, and so does it kind of accumulate here, or are they paid up? I guess I'm a little confused on it.
Are you talking about the lien report, Commissioner?
Yep.
Yes, that changes monthly, because they get interest added to it, so, and then it will change if we have to go out and clean up the property or mow the yard or do something that we incur expense for, we'll put a lien on the property to add to that.
So that seems to make sense, so I guess the most current date is where we stand with that owner or that piece of property.
Yes, and the report for next month, you'll see, if that name is still on there, you'll see the amount increase. If nothing else happens, it will be because of interest accruing on it.
And what about the recovery of liens that we've had? Are those, how did we recover that?
Well, we mail out notices to the property owners on a regular basis.
And did they just pay it?
Some do, sometimes it happens with the sale of property, master commissioner sales or different things like that, we'll recover property, the amount of money from that.
We'll say that the codes department has been active in sending out bills recently to notify owners, so we've had quite a flurry of questions and phone calls, which take a lot of time to investigate on the legal side to determine if the liens are in fact valid when they were placed on the property, and so we're wading through those, and so as we check each one, we send a letter to that property owner, and those have been paid to the owner's respect after they've been notified of the process that was put into place. And this notification report, or the maintenance liens, are the ones that will be going into the software program that you approved a meeting or two ago.
Yes.
That will be in at least a minimum of a monthly notification to anyone who signs up for those reports, so it'll be readily accessible to any third party who registers. A citizen, a bank, any interested party could register for that notification system via email.
This report is already on our website, and we update it every time that we change it monthly or anything else changes, so anyone can go out there and see that right now, until we get the lien holder notification working through our new software.
Other questions or comments?
Now, they can't say they weren't notified.
I have had no calls for anybody to notify me or ask to be notified, but the information's out there if anyone wants it.
Yeah, once again, I'm really impressed with this, and I think for the benefit of the public, I'll just say, because you can't see the pictures, but some of these properties that our codes enforcement haven't been able to go after and clean up, you should be happy that we did that.
But they are on our website if you want to see them. You can go out and look at them individually for the property address, and I've got them on there by month, so for the month of February is what you're looking at.
I'd just like to also add that while the transparency of the reports are good for the benefit of the public, I think it takes a tremendous amount of work for the codes department to prepare them, but it does serve as a protection for staff to the argument that, well, what are you doing? You don't do anything. There are these things that are going on, but you can see the volume of work and staff time and hours that it takes not only to compile the report, but to try to initiate compliance on the behalf of property owners.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Scott, the City Manager report?
Yes, sir. I want to just very briefly mention that this week in particular, we have as a commission and as a staff, a lot of meetings dealing with budget and economic development issues. For example, on March 15, our Wednesday, we have the 8 o'clock EDP meeting, which the mayor and city manager typically attend to talk about economic development issues. More recently, that's been the focus, and our consultant is down to again, have a discussion with the elected officials in the community later this week, which will provide an opportunity on Thursday, the March 16, here at City Hall at 5:30, to discuss our goals that we have as an advisory group have come up with and missed out and talked with a time or two. So we'll have another presentation here at City Hall, we could not get the room out at the Inter County Energy Building, but that's Thursday, March 16. Going back to March 15, Wednesday, we also have here at 9 o'clock, a special call meeting dealing with energy efficiency contracting. We had a meeting sometime a few weeks back, talking about the scope of that and the savings of that, and this is sort of the final look at that, not necessarily approval anticipated, but an in-depth look again at that scope of work and the savings that are projected to be obtained for the benefit of citizens and doing that over the life of the project, where essentially we get our capital equipment replaced and paid for over time by the savings achieved in energy. So, that and our vehicle leasing program, which we will be discussing in depth, where instead of purchasing new vehicles every year, we will be leasing those, and the projected savings of doing that amount to a considerable amount, about a million dollars, as I recall, over the lifetime of the project, or around perhaps 600,000, or 60,000 rather, a year. So we'll be looking at that and determining if we really want to proceed with that program as well in our upcoming budget. So, and then of course, on March 15 at 10 o'clock, we have our Economic Development Steering Committee discussion again, preceding the joint meeting again on Thursday afternoon at 5:30. We've mentioned that we have our guest from our sister city here, will be having an international dinner with the Rotary, rather, the Rotary International Dinner, the city will be participating and hosting Mayor Audrey Wells and her husband Chris at that dinner, so you're encouraged to participate in that as well. And then on the following week, March 23, at 9:00 AM, we have the scheduled, beginning at 9 o'clock here, the presentations from all the community agencies and joint city-county agencies regarding their budgets and funding requests for you for the next fiscal year. That meeting typically lasts all day, and we're starting early, we'll have working lunch here about 30 minutes, and continue, probably get out about 4 o'clock that day. And then our next meeting on March 27, our regular meeting, we of course have that at 5:30. We had talked the possibility of having a special call meeting ahead of our regular meeting to have input from the public regarding any budget request or needs they might particularly wish to do. And I think tentatively, we had suggested that start at 4:00. I'm suggesting for your consideration that maybe we start at 4:30. I don't think it will take that much time, we might have some time in between the meetings, so it might be better just to start a regular meeting a little sooner and begin with that at 4:30 rather than 4:00. So we'll have the special meeting at 4:30 and our regular meeting at 5:30. Just a comment for the public and for your benefit, we did receive quite a number of community agency requests again this year, and those are all compiled, and they weigh in at probably a good 35 pounds with all the paper and supporting documents in two volumes, and Donna Peake, our city clerk, has those for you to take at this time, so you can look at them prior to our meeting to review those. Our community agency request for next year totaled 230,500, which compares to 193,100 that the commission actually funded last year, so the requests are greater. Our shared city-county or shared agency funding request totaled 487,650, again, up from 468,000 that we actually funded last year or in the current fiscal year. That latter number of the shared agency of about half a million dollars, and that includes Parks and Recreation, our EDP, the Airport Board, and so forth, doesn't yet reflect any recommendations from our EDP consultant who may suggest additional funding for EDP in the next fiscal year. We have simply put into the budget at the EDP's request at the present time, current budget, so we don't know what that number may be or how we may consider that number and the programs that might come. But this is a long-winded way of saying, I guess, that we have a lot of requests for funding for the next fiscal year, it's going to be difficult to meet that funding. You might recall that last fall, we had a particular request from Bluegrass Community and Technical College that we intended to honor and said we would for $50,000 to support receipt of the state grant, which they did receive in large part, not the entire grant, but in large part didn't receive that. So, there's a lot of increased demand or request for these financial dollars in support of the many good things that community agencies do. I would just have to say, it's increasingly difficult to do that, as our revenue really has not increased significantly in the last year. That concludes my report, and we'll hear all the details, of course, on the day we have those hearings.
If my math is correct, then we're being asked or requested for 768,150. Wow, that's a big number. Other comments or questions, on March 15, at that 9:00 AM meeting, are there going to be representatives from Train here to answer questions for us?
Yes, at our meeting, Herschel Train will be here, Anthony Wright will be here.
Other comments, questions from the Commissioners? Scott, thanks, Mr. Scott, for that report. And that moves us to the next, or the second, hear the public, and during this timeframe, folks may approach us and talk about topics that are on their minds that are not necessarily on the agenda. And I'd like to ask if you come forward, please identify yourself and tell us who you represent, and try to limit your comments to 35 seconds or less. your comments to 35 seconds or less. Just kidding. Make sure these kids didn't go to sleep on me, that's all.
Good evening. We're here. My name is Betty Colan and this is Dow, short for Dalmatian. We're here representing the Danville Boyle County Humane Society. We wanted to make everybody aware of our newest fundraiser. We've worked for four years to build our facility out of the humane society. And it is built, it is beautiful, and it is paid for. And we invite everybody to come out and see it because it really is beautiful. But the costs still continue and we have found a company that will pay us for gently used shoes, all kinds, men's, women's, children's. And they in turn take these shoes to developing countries and give them to people, single mothers, a family, to use in starting a micro enterprise to try and make their situation better. So we're helping people on all the different levels and we're helping our animals too. So we just wanted to be sure everyone knew that they don't have to be new. They can have wear on them. They can't have holes in the bottom because they're going to countries where you can get bad things coming up into feet. So it needs a solid sole, no holes on the top, and not mildewed or moldy. But other than that, if they're worn, if they're dirty, that doesn't matter. And we need a lot of shoes. So if anybody can help us with that, it would be great. And I'm hopeful that possibly we could get a box here to let the people that work in this building donate some shoes. And I would say to everybody here, if you belong to any organizations that could put a box out, a church or a sorority or any kind of group, let us know. Just call the humane society and we'll leave your number and we'll get back in touch with you. This fundraiser goes through March 31st and it might go a little longer if we see that there are still places out that we might be able to get shoes. So help Dow and help the Boyle County, Danville Boyle County Humane Society. I'd just like to say, because when you were talking about Rachel and she's been here and what it looked like when she started and what it looks like now, I would compare that exactly to the humane society kennel the way it used to be and the way it is now. So you've had two examples tonight of fairly large bodies within the town of Danville that have really made strides. And Danville is just that kind of town. It does that. It goes upward. So we're proud and I know Rachel's proud. So are you going to go say hi to all the commissioners? He wants you to shake. He wants you to shake. Shake. Good boy. Good boy. What's good enough for Dow is good enough for everybody. Yeah, come on around.
Mr. Scott, if having a box here sounds like a good idea, what do we need to do to make that happen?
All right. Yay. Well, be careful along the aisles now. Hang on to them because...
My shoes have got her all... Kevin, you got to spare out the car, right?
Those are your old nasty shoes you used to...
Yes, sir, buddy. She convinced me to give them up.
All right.
They're typically in soles and everything, man. All right, someone else? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, Elaine Mills, Danville Boyle County Community Education Director. I've come to invite the commission... Do I need to pull that down? Always a short joke. To invite the commission as well as members of our community, tomorrow from 2:00 to 6:00, Fight is the families into getting help together. They are sponsoring a resource fair specific to substance issues. There will be probably 40 to 45 different providers. And when I say providers, a wide variety of resources for families and individuals that are struggling with substance issues. That is at the Church of God between Third and Fourth Street. And I hope you all have the opportunity to join us and we'll share that information with folks within your contact circle. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else? Ms. Brantley?
Good evening. My name is Jane Brantley. I'm here just as a concerned citizen to bring up an issue that's been before the commission many times, and that's the safety and walkability of our downtown. Just recently, I think within the last two weeks, there was yet another accident at the corner of Walnut and Main, or excuse me, Walnut and Fourth, at that stoplight there. And I walk downtown a lot. I live downtown. I'm constantly watching people run the red light at Fourth and Main and also at Third and Main. I know we've had pedestrian accidents. And I know that we talked about a walkability study, traffic calming, things like that in the past. Maybe we need to dust that off and have another look because it's still not safe downtown to be a pedestrian. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else? An FYI for you students is that we have made a commitment to not discuss or debate suggestions brought to us in meetings like this we have here, the public. We're not ignoring them. We hear them very well and we're taking good notes. All right? So I know he said, he ignored her, but I didn't. Okay. All right, let's go on. Anyone else on here, the public? If not, then our next item on the agenda is payment of bills?
Commissioner comments?
Oh, Commissioner comments? I'm sorry. See, I have my notes to cover that up. Okay, Commissioner comments?
I always get to start, don't I? Yeah, just trying to jump in there. I thank you, Ms. Brantley, for bringing that up because actually one of my comments was to restart that discussion again about public safety. I should say pedestrian and vehicle safety. I've had two calls this week or in the past week about some incidences and they're not all Main Street. So I think we just want to look at it all the way around town. A lot of them are big intersections out by our shopping centers. People are running lights and maybe we can think of some creative ideas there to kind of calm that down. So certainly we're not going to take that time tonight, but I appreciate you bringing that up as a concerned citizen because it's been on my mind as well. And if you don't mind, I'm going to carry on a little bit. We're proud of our own Chief Gray for making the cover of Boyle County Neighbors. That's pretty sweet. And we're also proud of the ranking we got, number nine in the nation for metropolitan area. That's economic development. And how about that Danville forensics team, huh? Win State for the 21st time in a row qualifies 12 for nationals. Proud of those guys and gals. And the Danville academic team, first place in Region 12, Governor's Cup, 11 of the last 13 years. I think I'm surrounded by a lot of smart people here. I'm just trying to do the best I can. So I only had one more thing and I want to give you just a brief, my fellow commissioners during this comment and certainly for the public, we have this ad hoc committee. We had a meeting this morning and just some highlights of that as the ad hoc committee is moving forward as it has been since its inception to support Millennium Park. Ron was there and so was the mayor. So there's nothing wrong there. We're putting some emphasis on paving out there. When the park was first built, only one layer of asphalt went down in the parking lot and never had the top coat put on it. So starting to see that deterioration because that's 17 years ago. So that's going to be, that's kind of the high end of things. And then we've kind of looked at some future needs. And so that discussion wasn't really anything in depth, but I kind of wanted to bring the rest of you folks up to speed on what's happened with ad hoc. And now I can be quiet.
Good report. Mr. Cullen?
Mr. Terry?
I just wanted to give a shout out to our neighbors, the Lady Titans in Mercer County, winning the state basketball championship. Those ladies have had some obstacles this season and they have persevered and they are champions, so.
Gosser, that came through. Anyone else? Thank you, Commissioner Siri. You just took all the thunder and fire from the rest of us, but that was a good report. But let's move on then. Ma'am, we'll call for the payment of bills.
That we pay the bills as presented on the bill list in the amount of $436,768.97.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Send them. Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine is Resolution 2017-03-13-01, bond council. And this is Gosser. Michelle Gosser is going to present that item to us.
Well, you have the resolution 2017-03-13-01, where the city of Danville had requested proposals for bond council dated December 28, 2016. We got three proposals in, one from Dismore and Cho, one from Ruben Hayes, and one from White, Turrant and Combs. After engaging with the city manager and the city attorney, we have come to the conclusion that we want to request that you all engage White, Turrant and Combs for our new bond council.
Any questions about the information that we shared orders over the weekend? Right, have a motion? Is all those in favor? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept Resolution Number 2017-03-13-01.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The next item is Resolution 2017-03-13-02, TEI recertification application. You agree with him? Chief?
Before you have a professional service contract with Dr. Turpin to be the medical director for our teaching and educational institution, basically what this is, is having a medical director for the fire department to be able to teach ourselves our continuing education in all medical fields. This doesn't affect anything like our responses. It's all about our internal training.
Any questions?
I'll move that we accept Resolution Number 2017-03-13-02.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually do have one. Thank you. Is there any cost attached with having this medical director? Okay, I didn't see anything in there. I thought I'd ask. So if he or she is called upon to do whatever they need to do for you, they're just wanting to do that. Great. That's good.
Reviews our equipment.
You say he reviews the equipment and the second thing was he does what?
Our trainings.
A training? Okay, so class classes. Okay, great. All those in favor of Resolution 27-03-13-02?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The resolution carries. Next item is first reading of ordinance 1892, code enforcement, fines and fines. Mr. Dexter?
Thank you, sir.
Read all that?
I am not going to read all of it to you. We have this, a culmination of what we've talked about the past year, it seems, and that may be accurate. And we gave a draft to you a couple of meetings ago and went through it with a fine tooth comb to say the different sections and lay that out to you. The one section that we did not have completed was the ones on suggested liens or penalties and fines. So staff has taken time to develop recommendations to you. Those are found on page, starting on page five. So I'll direct your attention to those, which are the fine schedules. There are two fine schedules. The first of which is if a violator pays the fine within a certain timeframe and they don't contest it. So someone realizes they messed up or had some violation of the code, they simply pay the fine. There's one for first, second, or third offenses. And you see the violations of whatever code section that may be under and what the penalties are. So if there, for instance, was some type of nuisance, the first time it'd be a hundred dollar fine, second offense, $200, all fines thereafter, $400. And then if you go to subsection B, you see that if a violator contests the violation and they, even though they are in fact guilty of it, then the fines are somewhat different. And they are a little, they're accelerated. So for instance, nuisances, additional $50 at each time for the first or second or all other offenses. And so you can see they vary by chapter based on severity, but most of them range from the 100, 200, $400 range, or if contested, 150, 250, or 450 range. I'm happy to review more of the ordinance with you if you need it. However, if you don't feel like you want that redundancy, then this will be ready or ripe for a first reading.
Entertainer motion?
For approval of the first reading of ordinance 1892.
Second.
This is first reading, but I think it's important we have real code book, so.
I was just going to say one quick thing before we did that is something I think we should remember and that might want to make the citizens aware of is before it gets to the citation level, they've already been notified on other occasions to get whatever it is brought up to code. So we're not right out of the box hitting you with a citation and a fine. We're trying to do it, trying to get, you know, compliance before we get to that point. So I think it's important to remember that.
That is a true point. In office, a safety, a code enforcement officer has the authority to issue a notice of violation. And that does not have to be assessed with a fine. That's at the discretion of the officer. And we thought it was important to keep that after we talked about some of the inequities that we discussed through our workshops and different sessions on the matter because the circumstances could vary greatly. Has someone been sick in the hospital? Have they been receiving cancer treatments in another city? Who knows what the circumstances are. But the officer does have discretion to simply issue a notice of a violation, seek compliance before any fines are levied.
Which was the flow chart that we approved, what, last meeting or meeting, two meetings ago or something?
I might also add, if I may, Mayor Protem, that at your request, we did survey other cities. All are faced with this issue and surveyed what their fine schedule was that they adopted. And this tends to be on the conservative or very lower end of the fines that are in place in many of the other communities. I didn't see any that really had lower fines than these. And many were quite a bit higher, actually. actually.
Ready for the question? Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Protam Atkins?
Yes. That concludes our printed agenda with the exception of a need for an executive session.
Yes, sir. We would request an executive session for personnel matters.
Chair, lack to entertain a motion? If you retain the right to vote no, but.
Want to go?
Yep, I'll do it. I moved it, I motioned that we move to go into executive session, discuss personal matter pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Entertainer motion to call us back into regular session, please? Somebody make a motion?
A move that we go into regular session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll be back in regular session. Madam Clerk, you going to lead us?
That you hire David Lewis and Tony Durson to the position of police officer recruit with the usual probationary measures.
No move.
Second.
Move the second? Any discussion?
Glad to have you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair, you didn't hear the motion for adjournment?
Yep. Sure. Hmm? Yeah, we did both.
We did both.
All right, Rick. Got to get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing adjourned.[1792.23]